All right, good evening and thank you for joining us for the September 24th Board of Education meeting. If you could all join for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we will start with the report of the superintendent, Dr. Burns.
Thank you very much. Good evening and thank you for joining us for our September 24th Board of Education meeting, the second meeting of the school year. Since our last meeting, we have held four out of five back-to-school nights. At Midland, Milton, and Osborne School were September 18th, and Ry Middle School was September 19th. I had a chance, Dr. Murray and I, to make it around to all of the schools, and everyone seemed excited to be back, both parents and teachers, and the Ry Middle School hallways were a sight to behold, and the line to get into the building was extraordinary. But I would describe it all as happy chaos. Ry High School's back-to-school night is this Thursday. Principal Hara will give a brief welcome and overview at the beginning of the evening, and then parents and guardians will follow a new and what we hope is an easily understandable schedule. We also hope folks will take the opportunity to peek into some of our newly renovated and newly created spaces like the Performing Arts Center, Act One, the Media Center, the gym, and the I-Lab. On Friday, we put out what we call Calls for Committee Members to the local media and our PO and PTO newsletters. We are in need of community members to volunteer to join three of our working committees, Technology Audit and Facilities. These committees do important work and are a great way to get involved in the school district without an enormous commitment of time. The information and applications can be found in the News and Updates section of the Ry City School District website. This afternoon, I returned from a New York State Superintendent's meeting during which two important issues were discussed. First, there was an update on the Rockefeller Institute's study of the Foundation Aid Formula. Robert Menga, the leader of the study, shared what he is hearing from school board trustees, superintendents, and community members from across the state. I would say that he's definitely hearing, certainly he mentioned every single thing that I brought up when I testified over the summer in the city. That was reiterated in his comments yesterday. So I thought that was optimistic, although, you know, he's just writing a report with recommendations. He doesn't make the decisions. He also shared the report would be re-released publicly on December 1st. My guess, from the past issuance of reports on set dates, is that that will probably happen sometime past 11:30 PM on December 1st, as often these state reports are issued. But we will certainly read it carefully and digest it once that happens. The second topic of importance that was discussed was the Graduation Measures Project, or was known as the Blue Ribbon Commission. And during that discussion, and they basically reviewed what the recommendations, and we've talked about that before, the state education department officials will be presenting a timeline of what's going to happen next for any changes at the November Board of Regents meeting, which is November 3rd and 4th. So we'll keep an eye on that information as well. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay. Great, thank you, Dr. Burns. So we will, sorry, my buttons are clicking too fast. We will now move on to presentation and discussion number one, the Ry Commitment and the 24-25 Board of Education Goals.
So, over the summer, as you all recall, at the summer planning retreat, we spent some time focused on reviewing information and data that we had previously collected and considering potential slight modifications to the Ry Commitment. The board had a really rich conversation. We had several drafts we went through, and so what you see...
Sorry.
No, that's our new cyber security system working as designed right now. But what you'll see on the screen in a moment, and what you see now, and this is at the request of our board president, was to show the changes with yellow highlights so that it's easier to see. This is the exact document that I sent to the board a couple days ago and that we worked through over the summer. And I thought it was important to take one last look at this again, because as we move forward and the board discusses goals, really thinking them in the context, thinking of them in the context of the Ry Commitment with some modifications. So I feel like this is a second policy discussion, like we do with policy, but just wanted to hear any additional thoughts. We had talked a lot about it, and you charged us with making a few more modifications. So the yellow shows you what's changed. So the left side is what's currently in the Ry Commitment. If you'd like to see it on the, it's right behind you on the wall there as well. And then the right side is the draft language for potential changes.
Great. Oh, no, go ahead. What were you gonna say? No, if, I'd like to go section by section, if you don't mind, because I do think it's important while they are, can appear to be just language changes, there was lots of conversation and intentionality about making the modification to the language, and I think it's important for us to reflect on it and just ensure that what our thinking was at that time is really captured here in this. And so when we look at the introduction language, and I will be the first to admit that when I first saw the Ry Commitment now, seven, eight years ago, it was not until I had to prepare for delivering a speech that I actually read that part. And I am that kind of reader that like, I'm like, just get to the chapter. I don't read an epilogue or a prologue. I'm just, get to the bottom. And in fact, the top part is quite a statement, and it is quite a statement to the community. And so there is the inclusion of the word collaboration, and that is really intentional because the board really wanted to highlight our partnerships across the district. And that it is not, as it continues on to say, that this is for the entirety of the community, and the community being students, staff, parents, administration across the board. And so that word, and introduction of the word collaboration really was trying to get at that point. We also removed where we talk about education. We moved the word "education," and instead we expanded it. And we talk about the academic and social emotional development now of our children. And that again is an intentional move on the board and the administration's part because, as some people will tell you every time they get a chance to talk to you, no child can be successful in their learning if they are not able to access the curriculum due to their own social and emotional state of mind. And there has been lots of conversation and a lot of development in terms of actual programs development, but also staff development and learning, and for the community and for our staff, to really help make sure that our students are in a place where they're able to best access the curriculum so that they can have advances and they are able to really be at their best in their academic development. In addition, we added the language of the highest of national and state standards, again intentionally, so we could be very explicit in the language to help the community understand that we're talking about the rigor and development of program offerings when we talk about things like the addition of the IB program at the high school, right? So we're looking at national and state programs and standards and making sure that we are intentionally thinking about those things, figuring out ways to improve constantly our curriculum and our curricular offerings to our students to make sure that they have the best opportunities in front of them. I don't know if anybody wants to add any color to what I've said there, any additional thoughts?
I would just, I think that's, it's a great summary, and I think part of the conversation that we had over the summer when we were reflecting on this was that, you know, the ongoing work that's continuing to happen becomes more reflected in this, in these language changes. So, like you said, Jane, you know, the academic and social emotional development, so not only are we reflecting, which I think we've done for some time, on what are the needs that students, what are the skills that students will need as they leave our school system? So there's a constant reflection on that, and I think we've continually gotten better at getting ourselves to a place where we're also aligning with the social emotional piece of that as well. I think we've had it in areas over time, and we're really working very intentionally to create a more synthesized approach to both of those things, because, you know, you're correct that it's, if you're, if you're unable to actually be present in the classroom when someone's telling you something, then you're not going to really retain it and you're not going to learn it in the same way. So I, that's, I think it's just important to highlight that it's not just the academic of what might be the highest standards of the state and the nation, but it's also the reflection of, we're trying to always look at what are the skills students are going to need when they leave our district, and how can we continually build those into their everyday experience?
Yeah, for sure. Okay, seeing none others, we can go on to the students' section. And the idea here, all of the words are, they tick and tie, so you can go and you can put little check marks, as I did, to make sure we didn't forget a skill. And it's, we're going really from actions to attributions, as it were. And so that you're, you are a caring citizen, you're, you know, positively contribute, critical thinker. It's more action-oriented type language, so we really want to make sure that the skills are things that students are actually able to take with them and be able to do, as opposed to have just been exposed to and be aware. Like, I know what critical thinking is, versus, I can be a critical thinker. And so really trying to make sure that, you know, as we talk about, as we evolve as a district and in the work that our staff and faculty do with our students, right? We really have been so intentional, there's been so much thought this past school year in the 23-24 year about critical thinking. And so it really is trying to reflect this effort to really instill the ability to be a critical thinker, as opposed to just being able to know what critical thinking is. And so that, it takes on that flavor for all of those. And then we moved on, sorry, it's like a fruit fly.
So it's still here.
Sorry, to the community. And here, we have included the phrase "seeking feedback." That is something that we, as a board, are always looking to do. That's why we hold these meetings every two Tuesdays, and we have emails, and we send out, and we're constantly looking to engage and get feedback from the community. And I, sorry, this is like the worst. I hope nobody ever watches this. Okay, so it is really about, as Jen was saying earlier, when it, when we talked about this idea of being explicit about saying "social and emotional development," we wanted to be explicit with the community to know that we are here for seeking feedback. And so it is just that intentionality and the explicitness of that, which has always been an inherent part of our work, but it really is about making sure that we're calling it out. And where we say, we went from "ask the community" to "ask you," it's more of a subject change in how that passage reads and to whom it is, you know, being read to or for, you know, in terms of changing the audience. And then fiscally, the addition of that word, again, this is something we hopefully can say with great pride, that the community supports and believes that we are a fiscally sound and thoughtful board, but we want to be explicit that that is something that does drive our work. And so we wanted to call that out as well.
I'm just going to comment on the fiscally responsible part, because I think we talk about that so often in so many other contexts, and it...
Didn't either.
It wasn't present here, and it was clearly necessary to be present. It had to be present here because it is, you know, it is definitely always something that is, is part of the process. Like, how do we do what's best for all of our students and maintain this very responsible approach with how we spend money and how that impacts our community?
Yeah, and it is, it's one of those things where inherently you do it, but if you just assume everyone knows that's how you think, well, you've already failed. And so this is making sure it's out there. So as a board, do we have any other comments or thoughts? Tom does.
Yeah, not the most substantive of, but, and my screen just, can you scroll down to the, back to the top one, the second change? So I think that it should say either "social and emotional development" or "social hyphen emotional development."
Yes, you can put a hyphen between "social..."
Sorry. Yes, a hyphen between "social," "emotional."
Got it.
Okay. I do think it would probably be beneficial to just see it all in a, because now we're going to have to, you know, redo a lot of, a lot of things, but let's take a look at it first.
In the proper format.
Right, and I think that'll just help us read the whole thing again, and so if we could bring this back for next, next time, that'd be great.
Sounds very fiscally responsible.
I try, I try, and it's not just a thought, it's a do. All right, excellent. And thank you to the administration for working with us this summer on helping to really be mindful about exactly what, the work you do and making sure people know the work that you do. And so it's really helpful.
I do have paper copies of the draft's goals.
Okay.
In addition to the electronic... Yeah. So again, this is based on the work of the summer, and there have been a few modifications based on feedback that came in from the board from Friday to today. So the first being, Jen, you sent in a comment that...
Yeah.
We...
Sure.
Yeah. And Val next.
Under the Instruction and Professional Learning, when we, when we were working through these to outline them for this year, the very first statement, originally we had included the word "equitable" up with "delivering rigorous equitable instructional programming." But it just, it actually makes more sense because we want our rigorous instructional program to be student-centered, equitable, inclusive, and adaptive, not just equitable and then all of these other things. So it was really, the only change was to move "equitable" to be with student-centered, inclusive, and adaptive, so that it talks about our whole instructional program and aligning with the Ry Commitment and to be those, have those elements as a part of it.
And then you'll, you'll recall that there are changes to the bullets on the professional learning based on the areas of focus for this current school year. So those were shifted, as you saw. And Val, you want to talk about the suggestion you had made?
Sure. In the second section, Communication and Engagement, on the right-hand side, talking about increasing our community awareness and engagement at Board of Education meetings and getting, and how we get the word out to our community. And it was just wanting to be as clear as possible that we are going to be promoting the meetings through district's social media platforms. So it's in an effort to gain more attendance, and hopefully people will just become more aware of all of the platforms that we have on, you know, the social media sites, and we'll use those for the Board of Education announcements. And it was just making that paragraph a little bit clearer and saying that look towards those social media outlets for information updates for Board of Education.
And in addition, we made some modifications to the official announcement that Lauren, our district clerk, sends out. So in the past, they would go out the day after a board meeting, so tomorrow would be the announcement for the next meeting. We actually shifted that so that it's the Wednesday prior to the board meeting, so it won't go out until next Wednesday. And it will also list any of the presentations or discussion items on that announcement, and that's already happened, so we did our first one for this meeting. Thank you, Lauren. And I hope you did have a chance to see on social media, there's a new template we created that does the same thing. It has the specifics on the meetings with the topics that will be discussed or presented that Colleen McGreevy created, and she pushed out, I believe the first one went out at the end of last week, and there was another one that went out today, just a reminder. So we'll see, hopefully, hopefully that will help bring more people to us. I see we do have someone, so maybe he saw one of our wonderful postings on social media, I don't know, but I guess not.
Maybe you'll go home now and you'll, you'll check it out.
And check the Instagram.
And then you'll tell all your friends. We appreciate that, thank you.
But it's also, I just want to say one more thing, is being more intentional about the usage of our social media sites, that is, to deliver specific, specific information, and it's not just to have an open site where there can be chatter and rumor and things like that. It's more direct.
And based on that, and based on that conversation from the summer, Colleen has really done a nice job showing all of the things that happened over the summer in the schools and the buildings throughout the start of school. So we're going to continue on that path, using those platforms to help get information out.
Yeah, they look great so far. Thanks.
Two things I wanted to make note of, in the second paragraph under Instructional and Professional Learning, ICT, I know what that means. I know we all at this table know what that means, but not everybody in the grander community may know. So either spell it out or parenz what it means, I think would be...
We will spell it out.
...most helpful. And then I did want to just draw attention to a change that, while minor, I do think is significant, which ties back to what Val was talking about and what we talked about in the Ry Commitment as well, about including the word "engagement." So in years past, it has just been a communication goal, but it is now expanded to be a communication and engagement goal. And again, it's that idea of using these social media platforms as a way to engage people, to get and ensure that people are hearing and seeing and having an opportunity to learn more about the good works that are being done every day. I do also, sorry, the third paragraph in Instructional and Professional Learning, the K-12 Comprehensive Social Emotional Learning Program, that is a goal that was from last year and is rolling over. The change, though, is that we, as a board, do not develop, and in the previous goal was for the, the Board of Ed was to develop. We support the development of, that is the work of the board, is to support the administration, not to do the work of the administration. We have wonderful administrators who know what they're doing, and we want to make sure that our roles are well-defined.
And we'll put a hyphen in there, Tom, too, so...
Now you've taken his talking point away. Sorry, Tom, leave your button on red. All right. Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
So we'll make those changes to put and bring it back on the next agenda for adoption.
Great. Thank you. Oh, that's me. Hold on, sorry. Okay, so, oh, sorry. All right, we will move now on to the Hearing of the Public on Non-Agenda Items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. I will ask the district clerk to set a timer, so if you hear the timer, please wrap it up. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So please understand that we may not respond to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure that questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask that you follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may always submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsd@ryschools.org. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to our Consent Agenda. Can I have a motion to approve this evening's Consent Agenda? Wow, you guys are moving fast. Sean Clougher, we gotta, we gotta remember, Chris isn't here anymore, guys. Everybody's got to pay attention. All right, Sean Clougher, seconded by Tom Stein. There we go. Let's take a look at this evening's Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda General, Consent Agenda Fiscal.
Can I just say there was, Val had sent a question about the skydiving agreement, just so you're aware, that was developed to protect the district in that situation.
Because the skydivers come in.
I think I lean with you towards the, you know, I'm always looking at the worst, you know, the possibilities of what could potentially...
There's a club of people like us, Val.
...just my occupation, and just wanted to make sure, the legal jargon is not my specialty, so...
And for those that don't know, Jeff Provenzano is a graduate of Ry High School, so he's doing this as a gift to, but apparent, for the second time, and this is catching on because Ry Neck is having a skydiver for their homecoming game before we have ours.
I mean, talk about trendsetters. It's amazing. And he is a professional skydiver.
Yes.
So this is not like just a hobby or something he does on the weekends. This is his job job, like he gets paid for this, so that's why we can feel comfortable moving forward. Okay, Consent Agenda Fiscal. Consent Agenda Professional Appointments. Consent Agenda Classified Appointments. Consent Agenda Pupil Personnel Services and Special Education. Consent Agenda Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Okay, seeing no comments, can I have a vote to approve this evening's Consent Agenda? All those in favor? That would be six to nothing with one absence. So, on this evening's Consent Agenda, as we mentioned, we are approving the contract for our skydiver for the Ry Harrison Game, which will take place on October 26th at 3:00 PM. There, on our Consent Agenda, is our "piggyback," and yes, that is the technical term for electrical work, and this is to help the district maintain costs and reduce costs in electric. So this is really, I did want to make sure that everyone is aware that the term "piggyback" is in fact a technical, financial term and not something we're just using. Yes, exactly.
We did not make that up.
Yes, and it is actually helping to keep and reduce costs. We appreciate a wonderful and accept a wonderful generous donation from the Midland PTO. There is two gifts this evening on tonight's agenda, $5,000 for teacher grants for classroom supplies and transportation field trips, as well as $15,000 to support field trips and cultural enrichment, always helping to enhance our student learning experiences. And for the PTO's donations, we are greatly appreciative. We have also approved on this evening's Consent Agenda the Districtwide Safety Plan for the 24-25 school year. We are always grateful for the work that is done by student, by our staff around our student and staff safety in all situations. And so while the safety plan really is comprehensive in that it thinks about things from the benign to the larger issues, and so we really do appreciate the work of our safety and security staff on that. We awarded a bid for our athletic field maintenance for repairs and improvements, and this was a commitment that was made previously to really take on a proactive approach... And this was a commitment that was made previously to really take on a proactive approach to the maintenance and upgrading of our fields all around the district. And so we are really looking forward to the opportunities that this will create for greater use and better field longevity. There is a rate increase for our traffic control employees. And I think, I just want to take an opportunity to share with our community that when you see these individuals, you should thank them. The things that they undertake on a daily basis as I drop my kids off and the things I see, it's nothing short of a miracle that every day we have the success for our students getting safely to and from school. And so I think it'd be really, it's just a nice thing to do is if you see one of them, say thank you. We also have an agreement with the Nature Center, again, extending the learning of our students outside of our classrooms. And we are very fortunate to have such a great local partner to be able to help support our students with this work. So that was this evening's consent agenda. So now we will move on to presentation and discussion number two. Plan for book talk? You want to go bottom first? Three, three, two, one? Let's go three, two, one. Let's mix it up. Keep everybody on their toes. All right. Tax collection update.
So Gabby and I are going to work through this presentation. Gabby and I are going to work through this presentation together. And there's a number of goals of the presentation. First, we, we just want to do a primer and reminder for those in the community about how school taxes are calculated. We did have some folks that called up and had questions about the school taxes and their increase this year. So we're going to walk through that process a little bit, talk about the factors that impacted this year's school taxes, give a quick update on the tax collection process because, as you know, we collect our own taxes for the first half collection period that ended a few weeks ago. And then we're going to discuss the impact of the Playland litigation, which is between the city of Rye and Westchester County and its impact on, on school district taxes and the school district as a whole, knowing that we have no seat at the table in this situation, but we have significant exposure in a variety of ways. So just a little bit of background for folks out there. School taxes are collected twice a year in August and November. Your school taxes are paid directly to the school district. So sometimes we'll have a community member that goes to pay their school taxes at City Hall and they'll be redirected to us, or they'll mail their check to City Hall and it'll get returned to them so that they can pay it to us directly. And taxpayers can pay in a variety of ways. One, if you're, you have a mortgage and you escrow your taxes, your mortgage company pays it directly. You can also pay your taxes online. So you don't actually have to come in and stick a check in that little red box on the wall or hand it to Yolanda or anyone that, that answers the door. You can pay it www.info tax online dot com. You can pay via mail, so we do receive people's paper checks in the mail. Although there are, it is not uncommon to have issues with the mail. And I know there was a huge news story earlier in the summer about glue traps being put in mailboxes in Rye. So, you know, and we always welcome folks to come and pay their taxes in person at the school district. And you would be surprised at how many people actually do that. So people come all the time during tax collection. Oh, no, this is me. Yeah, so there are, there are a couple of main components and Gabby's can actually show you a tax bill and walk through that. But our big piece on the school tax bill is the voter-approved annual district budget. So we develop a budget based on what is needed for programming for our students in the schools. It is the only budget other than your own that you ever get to vote on. You do not vote on a federal budget. You do not vote on the state budget. You do not vote on the city budget. You only get to vote on the school budget. And that happens each May by all taxpayers, all residents in the community and registered voters in the community. The tax levy, which we'll hear more about momentarily, is what is the total tax amount that's needed to support the approved district budget. So the tax levy is sorted out after the budget is approved. So you have the tax levy and you have what comes from other sources, so state sources. And if you remember during budget time, we talked about all the different revenue sources. So you have the revenue sources that include state funding and sales tax and things like that. And the tax levy is what is needed, the balance of that to support the budget. Then you have the total taxable assessment. Again, this is something that is out of our realm, but the city tax assessor, the city of Rye tax assessor determines and sets property taxable values for all taxable properties within the city limits. So what the taxable property amount is for your home or for a business that exists in Rye, but for all taxable properties in Rye. And the last is the tax rate. And that is the percentage per $1,000 of assessment of your home, which again, the assessment's developed by the city of Rye tax assessor. And it's the levy divided by the total taxable assessment, so all of the properties times 1,000. And that's used to determine the, the total taxes owed by an individual, individual property owner when multiplied by the property's taxable assessed value. So that's the primer part, and Gabby's got some examples now.
Thanks, Eric. So this may look familiar to most folks who live in the city of Rye. This is the, a portion of the typical tax bill that we send out. I've highlighted there in the upper right corner for this particular property, just identifying the components, as Eric described them previously, what the taxable value for this particular property is 38,750. And the rate per thousand is the 7431507. So when you multiply those two amounts out, that's where you come up with the total tax due for this particular property of the 28,79709. Again, it's collected in, in two pieces during the month of August and during the month of November. If those deadlines are missed, then penalties are applied. And you can see on the left-hand side of the bill what the elevation penalty is based on each month that the penalty will increase for as long as that tax bill remains outstanding. This next slide, which may look also familiar to folks when we come out and talk about the budget, we have identified here how the annual budget, like Eric had spoken, how we compile the amount of money that we ask the community to approve in terms of the annual budget based on what our programming is. The tax levy, which are the taxes that would be required for us to collect to support that budget. And then the next line there is the total assessment valuation, which is again, the combined total of what all the properties within the city limits will equal as defined by the city assessor. So you can see here the progression from 2022 to current year, how that number has changed. And then finally, by doing the calculation to figure out what the tax rate would be, you can also see the progression of the tax rate over the last few years. Many of the questions that I received this year as our bills were released had to do with what significantly changed because folks had seen a 9.07% increase in the tax rate. So the two main drivers of that increase were the district successfully passed an override this year going into the 2425 school year, which resulted in a higher-than-usual tax rate increase.
And that was the, the number that we talked about in the community during the budget process, the 6.5, 6.41 that people would expect because of the override budget.
And then the other driver that significantly impacted the tax rate, because again, when we talk in the community, when we're, during budget season, we focus on what the tax rate is publicly because we can't anticipate what each property value is going to be, but we can estimate what the tax rate is to allow folks to then take that information based on their own personal property assessment to do a back-of-the-envelope math to figure out what to expect when that tax rate comes in. The way we do that is by staying in touch with the city assessor throughout the budget process to ask them to provide us an estimated amount of what the total assessed valuation is going to be. And if you remember during my presentations, it always has an asterisk next to it that says is subject to change because we literally call the city assessor the day that the board is going to pass that, the tax warrant to identify what that final number is going to be.
And I believe in last year's presentations, we actually updated it multiple times throughout the budget discussions and put the dates that we got that information from the assessor.
Correct. So I kind of went on a boardwalk there, but.
That's okay.
And the other significant change is the movement of the Westchester County-owned property known as Playland on and off the tax rolls. So if you look at the taxable assessment valuation, you see a significant increase from the 2223, 2223 school year to the 2324 school year. That shows the shift when Playland was added to the tax rolls. In effect, what that does is by adding a significantly large property to the tax rolls, it decreased the overall tax rate by 0.77%.
So it causes a recalculation of all of the other taxable properties in Rye. So when you add that larger amount, it then reduced the taxable amount of the remaining properties in Rye and therefore folks saw a decrease of 0.77%.
Then, as we prepared for the 2425 school year, it was determined that Playland, the Playland property was deemed untaxable. So therefore, it was removed from the tax rolls. That's why you see the decrease from 135 million to 132 million. That decrease in the total assessment valuation, when you go to do the math to identify what the tax rate is going to be, therefore caused an increase to the tax rate to make up for that valuation that was lost of 2.36%. So when you look at what the district anticipated the override was going to cause as an increase into the tax rate and then factor in by removing what the Playland property from the tax rate, it elevated it to that 9.07%.
So the next, the next slide is more of a, you sort of the, the talking points of the impact on school taxes. So just to give a little bit of history and background, the Westchester County-owned property Playland historically has not been on the tax roll. It's owned by a municipality and that makes it tax exempt. So this is not just here in Rye, it's across the state. In 2022, the city of Rye tax assessor determined that Playland is a taxable property and added it to the tax roll. And it increased, it therefore increased the city of Rye overall taxable assessment by about 3.3 million. So you saw that number Gabby was just talking about? It increased by 3.3 million. In 2023, and this was as part of the ongoing litigation and a settlement agreement for the 2023 tax roll between the county and the city, Rye Playland was removed from the tax roll and it therefore reduced the overall assessment, but it, the agreement reduced it by 2.9 million. So there's some differences in the numbers there. So, so what's the impact of that? So when Playland was added to the 2022 tax roll, it resulted, and we said 0.77 on the previous slide, it's like 0.76 number, number, you know, so it was around 0.76, 0.77 decrease in the tax rate. So all taxpayers, and I remember talking with some taxpayers who called, experienced a decrease in their school tax bill from the 2324 school year. And for most, it may have been a fairly small amount or it was just enough to notice. A lot of people didn't call and they just said, my taxes are lower, I'm going to go with that. And, you know, so they saw that decrease. When tax, when Playland.
Can I just stop you there for a second? So I think, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on this. So when they saw the decrease, what was also puzzling about that is that we passed a budget, it was tax cap compliant, but it was not a flat budget.
No.
It was not a decrease in our, you know, it wasn't like we were, we were saying we're going to take, we're not going to budget as much for next year, we're going to go lower. So, so the 0.77, the decrease down to 0.77 is actually more significant than seeing 0.77 because we, it also takes, takes away.
Way the increase.
The actual tax levy increase that was compliant, but, so I just wanted to.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, because I had.
Because you added 3.3 million to the assessment.
Yes.
Right, and I remember people saying, didn't you guys increase the budget? Why is my tax bill less? And the reason is because your percentage of payment, what your tax responsibility is for the whole city is now less because there's a big property that's now going to take some of that burden away.
Right, right. And I think it's, it's just, I just wanted to talk that through because looking at the, at the chart, you sort of missed that a little bit because 9.7, 9.07 feels so much larger.
Right.
But you missed the fact that there was all of this other normal increase that would have happened, that because this parcel came on, the distribution was that impacted by it.
Right, because if you look at the two previous years.
Oh, Gabby, hit your, go green.
Thank you. If you look at the two previous years, you do see a tax rate increase approximately 2.5% in the two previous years.
Right.
So following that trajectory, you would have anticipated an additional 2.5% in that 2324 school year.
Right.
But as a result of Playland going on the rolls, and it's not a dollar for dollar because it's 130 million to 135 million. So there was also inflation happened, property values did go up during that time period. So there was a mix there of what was happening, but to your point, when you see a negative 0.77, when in reality you would have anticipated a 2.5, that's how much it actually took away that year in terms of an increase in tax rate.
And so when you look, so that's, that's talking about that 0.77, 0.76 decrease. So the 2023 tax roll, which is what impacted our 2425 budget, you see as a result of taking Playland off, just that singular property resulted in a 2.3% increase in the tax rate. So our change because of the override, and I think this was the number that we said from the outset, it was a 6.4 budget to budget, 6.55 tax rate increase. That 2.36 goes on top of that 6.55. So it feels a lot more than what we had been talking about in the budget process, but out of our control.
Well, and out of our control and also without any ability to influence. So as you stated, Gabby, right, you're calling the city assessor and asking for what is the, what is the number?
the, what is the number, what is the valuation, what is it? We don't determine it, we don't have a say in it, it is a number that is provided to us.
So the current status of where we are today, so the county, Westchester County, as you know, did not pay the 2.24 million dollar tax bill for the 23, 24 school taxes. The City of Rye and its legal obligation paid that bill to the school district on behalf of the county, as they would with any taxpayer that does not pay their taxes. The city does what's called making us whole and then the city, because we have no legal authority to collect unpaid debt, we can't foreclose on properties. If you see auctions of properties that sometimes you see ads in the newspaper that properties are going to be auctioned, those are tax sales because someone has unpaid taxes. The city has the legal authority to do that. We can't do any of that. So the city pays us the money and it did. And they worry about, they collect the taxes, the unpaid taxes. The city, however, has informed the district that depending on the result of the litigation, it may require the district to pay back the 2.24 million dollars. We don't know when the result of that litigation will be or may possibly be, but they have informed us that we may be paying back 2.24 million.
So we create a budget and the budget accounts for all services that we provide to all of our students, salaries and benefits and the whole kit and caboodle. And the 2.24 that was unpaid went to pay the anticipated and determined payments that we had. So it is not as if it was money that was unneeded or unused, it was accounted for and it was going towards providing the educational services and programs for our students.
Right, and we have no idea, most people pay their taxes, but we have no understanding during our budget preparation or our entire budget process if a taxpayer is not going to pay their taxes. The city makes us whole, we present our budget to the community based on the programs we need, not based on whether or not people pay their taxes. The community approves that budget, the board issues the tax warrant, we collect the taxes. So, yeah. We were informed, so for 2023, as I mentioned before, there was a settlement agreement. So there was a settlement agreement that covers this current tax year, but the City of Rye Tax Assessor has placed Playland back on the tax rolls for the 2024 tax roll and that creates absolute uncertainty for us and the impact that it could have on 25, 26. So if Playland, go ahead Matt.
Just for clarity's sake, so they haven't yet received that 23 payment and they took it off, or it is currently off, but having not yet received that back payment, they decided that they want to put, and this is final, this is now in, this is back in.
It's not, the 24 roll is not final yet. There's a little bit of time, but as of now, it's on, correct. So the, the 23, 24 bill, which was the 22 year, was not paid by the county. The city paid it to us. The 23 roll, there was no impact because Playland was taken off as per the settlement agreement between the county and the City of Rye. The tax assessor has determined that for the 24 years, so they, there's still some time before that's finalized, but it's, the grievance period is over, that Playland is back on the tax roll.
Well, just to clarify though, it is currently on.
Yeah.
They, it is not as if there's ambiguity at this point.
No, it's on.
It is on, so the only result that could happen is that they could remove it before it is finalized.
Correct.
It is currently on.
Yes. Again, when we build our budget for the 25, 26 school year, we're going to build a budget based on what we need for programs and services. We can't, we could never get into the game of trying to determine whether or not individual taxpayers are going to pay their taxes or not.
Well, and aren't we legally obligated to budget that way?
Yeah.
It's not like, it's not like we're just doing it because we think it's the right way to do it, which it is.
That.
But we are legally obligated.
Correct.
To build our budgets that way.
We can't build money into it that we don't need.
Exactly.
We're not allowed to do that.
Exactly, exactly.
I guess just for clarity's sake, again, don't know whether the city will do this, but if they tried to sue the district for that back payment to, or I guess not sue, just if they asked for that payment back for the 23 period, then that would need to be part of our budget.
Well, we would have to have some significant conversations about.
There's no flex where this money can be coming from.
Yeah, there is no, there is no place where we could just pull 2.24 million and make that payment. We would need to make some hard decisions about how we go about doing that.
But what's a little, what's even more concerning at this point is that.
We're at risk of it doubling.
We're at risk of it happening again and it could be double or more.
Yeah.
Just because we don't know what the exact number would be, especially since we're seeing the assessment number that's been assigned for the property shifting over time as well. So we don't really know what that amount.
No.
Could potentially be. And not to mention that the taxpayers are also bearing the brunt of this.
The whiplash, yeah.
This, it's exempt, it's been exempt for what, 100 years or something? It was, I remember reading an article about it in the last few years, it's been a while, that it's exempt, then it's not exempt, then it's exempt, then it's not exempt. There's, that's a lot for the taxpayers to have to bear the brunt of.
And then should we be in the position that we have to pay that back, that, like I said, that we would have to figure out how to do that?
Well, and there's great reason to believe that if the city were to come a calling for a 23 that should the 24 stay on, right, that it's going to, that the requirement of paying would be double. We will have to pay for two tax years, not just for one. But mind you, these are all funds coming from the same group of citizens who are getting and having the same services provided from a city and a Board of Education.
We, me, we have asked both Gabby joined me, we have asked the county repeatedly, we have asked the city repeatedly to please resolve this without further damage to the school district. We'll continue doing that, but we have on many occasions with both parties being that that's really all we can do. We've done it in individuals and face-to-face meetings with both parties. We've done it through our attorney, sending a request to please resolve it and our attorney having conversations with attorneys, but to please resolve it and not make this a compounding problem that is ultimately going to hurt the taxpayer and hurt the children. So the last slide was just sharing with you, so the first half has been a very successful collection period. So as of press time, 49.36 million of the first half taxes has been collected already.
So that, that puts us right on track to where we expected to be at this point.
Well, that's good news.
Yep.
At least there's that. So far, so good for this year.
So thank you, Rye.
Yes, thank you.
That's right, we appreciate all of our taxpayers always supporting the wonderful work that our staff and their teachers are doing on behalf of all of our kids. We're quite lucky to be able to be in such a wonderful place of learning for our kids. Does the board have any other questions or comments about this situation?
Oh, so go ahead.
I guess I was just going to ask if there are any specific dates that the city's made, made you aware of, of when that decision, when that official decision needs to be made so that the community can be aware?
So I believe your next round of city taxes is January. So it's soon that it's going to have to be finalized, whether or not Playland will remain on those rolls. I speak with the city assessor on a regular basis because I do check in on that number even outside of our own budgeting cycle. And as of the last time we spoke, which was this week, it, it remains on the tax rolls.
Well, and that means there's going to be a budget process for the city as well before that can be, before any, any collection can happen. Obviously, they have to do their, their own budget process prior to that. I just wanted to say thank you to the administration for staying on top of this and keeping us apprised of this very complicated seesaw that we seem to be on, that we can't get off of no matter what we do, unfortunately. And so, you know, I know that that's, along with your regular responsibilities on a day-to-day basis to then have to be tracking this as well, just really appreciate all of the efforts that have been put in around it.
And I certainly echo the appreciation. I would be a little bit more, a little less complimentary in referring to it as a seesaw. I think what has, what, what has happened as a result of this back and forth of the addition, the subtraction, the addition, the subtraction and the uncertainty of 2.24 million and the obligation or the, the coming to have to pay, that's a lot of stress and there's a lot of financial stress and a lot of financial conversations that have to happen and all of which are compounded by the extension of this debate and conversation that the city and the county are having. And so the sooner this can all just be solved and resolved, the sooner we can all get back to being in a, in a fiscal state that makes sense and that works on behalf of all of the taxpayers and for our primary concern, on behalf of all of the students. And so I certainly hope that that's something that we can see in the next bit of time. So thank you for all of your work on it and your continued efforts and we will continue to, I'm sure you will continue to keep us updated and we will continue to have conversations as a board because certainly if this issue is not resolved by the time we begin our budget conversations, this is certainly going to need to be information that the taxpayer is well, well-informed and well-aware of because we want to be certain that when we come to the community and say to the community, this is what we need to provide the best services and the best education to your students and we provide you a, a figure, a percentage, that that is what it is. Because it's unfair for a taxpayer to be given a number and then all of a sudden finding out it's a different number. And so we want to make sure and be certain that whatever information we have as we go forward with our budget season, that that is information that we continue to share with our citizens. So more to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on now, reverse order, we'll do a policy review. Ms. Boyle.
Okay, so these are all policies that we discussed at the last meeting. They're all basically updates that were reflected because of an update to the EdLaw 2D required, or parameters, that's the word I'm looking for. And the only sort of unique one of all of these policies is 1120R, which is the school districts, school district records regulation, which we typically do not adopt regulations. We usually only adopt policies, but this was a requirement that was laid out in the Public Officers Law 87 for this particular regulation to be adopted as well. I did not receive any additional questions or feedback from the last meeting, so if there are no further questions about these, we can move them forward with these changes for adoption at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. Okay, plan for October 8th book talk?
This is a simple one, one of my favorite nights of the year when the board has a chance to have a book talk like we ask of our kids on a regular basis and our staff around Jennifer Wallace's book, Never Enough. We will attach a simple protocol to the weekly update next week so that, you know, you'll have a couple of tasks in advance, either isolating a couple of passages that you really struck you. Well, actually what I'll do is I'll include it in this Friday's update so you have the full two-week period in advance. So it's anyone that is interested in Jennifer's work, Jennifer spoke with her in my last year, book is called Never Enough and there you have it. Really does fit and as, as we were talking about the goals earlier, and Jane specifically mentioned this goal, it's the social emotional program that the SEL committee that Tricia and Erin have been working on with the, the team, there is a real strong connection to this book and the content within it. So again, I love this meeting and there aren't too many boards who do this kind of thing, so kudos to you because I think this is the really important work that boards of education everywhere should be doing.
It's a great book. For those of you who haven't had a chance to read it yet, it's also a very easy read. So.
I'll also put in a plug for Libby, which is an audiobook app where you can download the book for free using your library card.
Oh, look at that.
What's that app, Matt? Say that again loud.
It's L I B B Y.
L I P B Y.
Yep.
How about that? See, something new every day. Thank you, Matt. All right, now we will move on to information and discussion and Ms. Boyle again.
More policies. Okay, so the first policy on, on our list here is 6334, which is the use of credit cards. This is a very slight change to this policy. And in actuality, it was one that was born out of experience in the business office that this slight change of saying each instead of all about the cards that are issued to district personnel is to, was to help with more efficiency in terms of purchasing, doesn't take away any of the purchasing order parameters or anything like that, but it just was going to help provide a little bit more efficiency within the day-to-day operations. And then we have the policy number 9520.6, which is the expression of breast milk in the workplace. This may sound familiar, we've talked about this before in the last six months or so. So again, there was another update to New York labor law and the most significant change to this policy is that originally employees were allocated time to be able to go and express breast milk, however, it was unpaid. And so now. And so now it is paid. And they also can, in addition to a 30-minute paid break for this, they can also use additional paid breaks or other breaks they have throughout the day to add on to it. So that is the most significant change to this policy. Any questions? Okay, then we will move these forward to the next meeting for discussion number two.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. All right, communications to and from the board, we can see that the policy meeting met and we have future meetings, we've got a lot coming up. We've got the Audit Committee on the first, the Curriculum Council will meet on the 16th and Policy will meet on the 9th. So we will have so many things to discuss at our, not our next meeting, but then the meeting after, but Tom will be very ready on, for the October 8th meeting because he's in charge of the Audit Committee with Ms. Peruccio. So we look forward to that report.
Lots of audit action on October 8th.
Well, that's where, that's where it's taking me, is that our next meeting on October the 8th, we will have our external audit report and we will have our book talk. So, and we will take a look at the updated and revised goals and Rye commitment. So it's going to be quite an exciting meeting, so I hope to see more people there because it's going to be full of great things. The board will be moving into a second executive session, which we will not be coming back out in public for to close. So can I have a motion, please, to go into executive session? There we go, Matt Chibinoff, quick on it. Seconded by Tom Stein. All those in favor? That's 6-0. We will see you on October 8th. Thank you.